Good afternoon. It is six o'clock. This is a meeting of the plan in zoning commission for the city of Laredo. Today is July the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and I'm calling this meeting to order. First item is, of course, roll call.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. El Asmo Villarreal?
Present.
Jorge Dominguez?
Present.
Rafael Dueñas?
Present.
Abraham Lugo?
Present.
Johnny M Narvais?
Present.
Raúl Ugaldi Jr.? Larry Dovalina?
Here.
Daniela Zada Paz? Ana Gabriela Villarreal?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have four. Thank you. Can everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under your honor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item we have is a consideration of the approval of the minutes.
Can I make a motion to excuse Daniela because I know that she's out of town on business?
You can second the motion. We have a motion for Daniela and Habar Ugaldi.
Yes.
Put him on.
Yes.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, the next item we have is a consideration of the approval of the minutes of the meeting of July the first.
I move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second for Commissioner Dominguez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have anybody at this point to sign up for citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item number six, discussion possible election to set a date, time, and place for planning and zoning commission workshop regarding Rico Laredo project.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We come up with some dates that we hope that you would consider. The best possible date, I'm going to start with that one. The reason for it is, we also have the group that's coming in to speak. We have them scheduled to speak to the Royal Builders Association, and that's in the afternoon at three o'clock. And we were proposing July twenty-ninth at noon here in the chambers to do the workshop so that they can do the presentation here, and then from here they can go straight to the Builders Association, do a presentation there, if that works for you.
What day of the week is the twenty-ninth?
It's a Thursday.
Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
I have an issue with that because I'm not here.
Okay.
At what time would that be, in the morning?
Well, we're suggesting twelve, but we could also do it in the evening at the regular scheduled time that we have our meetings at six. We also have, and that's only because we can kill two meetings on one day.
All right, let me tell you something. I just took a quick poll. A poll right here, most of these guys can't make noon.
Okay, let's say.
It would have to be a six o'clock meeting. Well, why don't we do this, instead of having it here, why don't we have it at the Joga Library, that nice facility, that room they have in there? I think that would work real good.
That's where they're in, the thirty-five or so.
Well, we can do that because from three to five, we're meeting with the Royal Builder Association there.
And that's what I'm saying, you know, it'll be a real quick, it'll just, like, you know, it's right down the street.
You're meeting in that room?
We're meeting over there, yes.
In the multipurpose room at the library.
So we could schedule our meeting at six, and then.
So, I mean, you know, it would be, make more sense, right?
Yeah. We're just flipping and.
If you started at six, I'm okay.
Okay, well, that's, I don't think most of the people can make it at twelve, so it would have to be at six. Are you okay with six?
Yes.
Six? Okay, six, six. All right, so perfect. So they'll do their presentation to the OBA at three, they'll finish there, probably about five, then we have a little break, and then we'll start the planned zoning meeting, and we'll do our workshop right after that. Okay.
Well, there's no meeting for P and Z, is this the workshop?
No, I'm sorry, it's the workshop, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so that's set for everybody around here. All right, next item is a public hearings. First public hearing is amending the zoning ordinance to the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot Ten, Block Two Eighty-eight, Eastern Division, located at twenty-two oh five Logan Avenue, from R two, multifamily district to B one. Okay?
So the applicant is Sergio Suárez, the owner, and the applicant, the representative is Ana Suárez. Property location is Lot Five, Block One, Los Coralitos, located at eighteen two eleven FM fourteen seventy-two. Zone change request is to a B four, and the proposed use is a highway commercial.
Party strike.
Commercial truck state inspection. Letter sent nine zero four and zero against. This is an overview of the location. This is aerial view with a two-hundred-foot buffer. The street view. Additional overview, just a little zoomed out, so you can see the intersections of El Pico, and they're just north of that. This is a zoning map. NLCI, and the future land use. So staff supports an application for the following reasons: The property is in a growing industrial area, supports the M one type activities. The property is requesting the zone change fronts FM fourteen seventy-two Mines Road, which is in line with the request zone change to a B four highway commercial district, and the site meets the lot width sixty-five-foot requirements for M one. Motion to recommend or deny.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change, in favor of the zone change?
Do you have the representatives here? Mr. Suárez and his daughter.
Was tabled. Which one? River Hill. River Hill. Yeah. River Hill was tabled.
We are in favor.
Yeah, I told her we're going to do this.
You can speak into the.
Into the mic? We are in favor.
Would you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Ana Suárez, and I am the representative, and I'm in favor.
All right, thank you.
I am Sergio Suárez, and I'm in favor.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions for the applicants? Why are you changing the zoning? Why are your requests changed?
Yes, yes. Bueno, la verdad es que estamos trabajando ayer ese, y siempre hemos estado dando el servicio de la desinspección del día o fin. Hay mucho tráfico, se para gente afuera, esto, el otro, y mandaron un representante de la ciudad que no se podían parar afuera. Y yo fui a corte y me mandaron que tenía que cambiar la zona, porque para que fuera comercial.
It's a compliance.
Ese es el motivo del cambio de la zona, no es, no sé, no es nada malo, yo trato de siempre, siempre tratamos, porque como es curva, tratamos de que está más abajo la curva, de que nadie esté afuera, el que llegue inmediatamente lo movemos. Hay gente que llega, se me puso a mí, pues, un poquito bravo, y digo, yo miré, lo que pasa es que el chófer de carretera anda perdido, hay mucha gente nueva en carretera que llega por una dirección y están perdidos totalmente, y dicen, no, mira, ¿dónde está esta dirección? Pues vete para ahí, yo anduve en carretera, y yo sé lo que es andar perdido, y más con un camión tan grande de cincuenta y tres pies de largo, ¿no? Y hay gente que se para ahí, y pues, ni modo de correrla, es decir, vete, 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 porque no te quieren aquí, ¿no? Hay gente que se para, a más a direcciones, o esto, el otro, y ¿dónde está el Metropolitán?, ¿dónde está el otro?, ¿dónde está este?, ¿dónde está la calle Fulano?
Okay. Nomás quería saber por qué estaban caminando. Está bien, correcto. Muchas gracias. Thank you. Anybody who wishes to speak?
Yo tengo una pregunta, Chairman.
Okay, all right. Si, go ahead.
Chairman, gracias. ¿Cuál es su negocio, de qué se, de qué se negocio, de actividad tienen?
De inspecciones del día o tiene tractores de camiones.
¿Y el hecho de que sea afilado no resulta peligroso al tráfico?
Mire, yo tengo el estacionamiento ahí afuera, trato de, la verdad que en mi estacionamiento caben enfrente, el taller está atrás, haya de cuenta, yo dejé un espacio, vamos a hablar de, pues, no sé exactamente cuánto me iban a traerle, pero caben dos camiones, de cuatro, como unos ocho camiones. No hay, la verdad, no hay peligro por eso. Hoy, en la actualidad, hay más peligro atrás en lo de lobs, que se paran ahí afuera gente a dormir y todo, pero, pues, la verdad, no, no pasa, no ha pasado nada, gracias a Dios.
¿Y el cambio de zona que usted pide, cuál sería el beneficio, nada más de suelo comercial?
Bueno, lo mío es nada más porque a mí me dijo el juez, la verdad, o sea, porque alguien me dijo que tenía que cambiar de zona. O sea, la verdad es por eso.
It's for what you said, the compliance issue? Yes. The compliance, sorry. I agree. Okay? Okay.
Muchas gracias. Gracias.
Gracias, Chairman, gracias.
Sir. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor or against the zone change, in favor or against the zone change? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and supports staff recommendation for the zone change.
We have a motion, we have a second. Second. We have a second. We have a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody who's opposed? Motion carries, thank you. The next item, amending the zoning ordinance to the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately ten point eight seven eight acres, Portion Thirty-eight, Abstract Four Seventy-two, as the Bolito Sanchez. This is located east of Highway eighty-three and south of Obsidian Boulevard from R one to B three and to R one A. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to recognize Mr. Raúl Ugaldi Jr. that showed.
Please note that he has a right.
Careful to go through the presentation.
Oh, cue.
Always ready, always ready.
Yes, let's get the presentation, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Let me just do it for you. Applicant is Pablo LLC, the owner, the representative is Porras Nance Engineering. The property is description is Abstract Four Seventy-two, Portion Thirty-eight, T Sanchez, ten point eight six one nine acres, located a thousand feet east of US Highway eighty-three and south of Obsidian Boulevard. Zone change request is R one A, single-family reduced area, and the proposed use is residential. There are thirteen letters sent, zero, four, and zero against were received. It's a general overview of the location. It's an aerial view with the property boundaries, two-hundred-foot buffer. Street view facing south. I took a little bit zoomed out from our previous meeting, so y'all can get perspective of the intersection. This is a zoning map, currently R one and B three, and future land use, neighborhood mixed use. Staff supports the application for the reasons proposed, R one A district is in conformance with the comprehensive plan design of this area as a neighborhood mixed use. The proposed zoning is compatible with residential uses in the area. The developer seeks to install utilities within a front utility easement as referred to in the planning and zoning meeting from July first, two thousand and twenty-one, item eight A, El Cendero. Proposed motion to recommend or deny.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor?
Chairman Wayne Porras Engineering, we're in favor of this.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against, against the zone change? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, we had a discussion about the segment of eighty-three that this particular subdivision and others are connecting to, and there was a discussion of who had the maintenance and ownership of that right-of-way. I believe the planning director has now made contact with Text dot, and I would ask that he relay the information to us that somehow, I think, needs to be clarified in order for us to be able to make an appropriate motion on anything connecting to that roadway.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, what we did was we called Text out to find out what's the situation. Those of you that are not familiar with it, it's, there is asphalt from an old road back in the day, but it since has been condemned to nothing, it's just there. So we talked to Text dot, they are trying to figure out what to do. It does belong to them, and they're trying to figure out how they're going to, how they're going to work with it to let developers cross through to get to eighty-three and set up drives to developments. Mr. McGee, Dan McGee, who was the traffic director, was also in the meeting. He questioned Obsidian and asked to see if there was a permit to allow that connection. We're still investigating that. So at this time, what will end up happening is when the developer, the engineer goes to, to the city by, we're hoping the state will have an answer for what that road is and how they're going to be able to develop around it or through it or on it. So that's, that's still in question.
But if you, if you go out to that area, Obsidian isn't the only road that traverses that or creates an intersection at that street, and regardless of whether Text dot is undecided of what to do with the street, it is an open street, and it is a recognized road, and so therefore they need to maintain it, and they need to address the issue, and it's not.
That's correct.
It's per mitantito, and I'll come back later and tell you, it's a situation where you have a bunch of subdivisions that have already been connected to it, with or without a permit, and they basically acquiesce because they did nothing. And so they allowed it, and so now they are trying to unravel whatever happened, and they just need to move forward, they can't just keep you on hold.
That's correct.
Till they decide what they're going to do.
And we'll be asking for them to give us a response in writing so that hopefully we can have something that we can present to the commission.
Okay. Any other questions for staff, for anyone? All right, if not, what are the wishes of the commission on this item?
I want to mention that actually we're doing a zone change, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Dovalina is correct about the, about the access, but when they bring the plant, then we need to be able to work with that, with the platters, to the access. Giving the, the zone change, I think it's appropriate right now to an R one A, and then we can deal with the, with the platform when it comes in. So, that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay.
According to staff recommendations.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item, amending the zoning ordinance to the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately forty-one point three five acres. This is located east of FM fourteen seventy-two and south of Loop Twenty from B four, R two, and R one to M one. Jason?
Right before we jump to that, this is a little unique one, there's going to be five consecutive ones that are related on number forty-nine, and I was just going to show you a quick overview of what this area encompasses. So master plan summary, five zone changes for forty-nine, they're going to be A through E. This is the general area, the last patch of green land between Mines Road just south of Loop Twenty. The aerial view. This is a proposed zoning, current existing zoning that they provided us. These are the zone change requests, as you can see, there are many, and then this is the ultimate zone change that they would like to see. And this, these are the parcels that each section is going to change, so I just want to provide you with that so you can kind of see, they're all together, and they're broken out by letters, and they'll follow in that order. So here's seven C, public hearing recommendation of ordinance for zone case forty-nine A, two thousand and twenty-one. Farias Development LTD is the owner, Barton Benson Jones PLLC is the representative. Property description is Portion Twenty, Abstract Forty-eight, B García Track Five, located east of FM fourteen seventy-two, south of Loop Twenty. Zone change request M one, industrial, and forty-five letters were sent, zero, four, and zero against. Again, the aerial view. Overview aerial view now. Street view from the front, looking south. And this was a section from those three, as you can see, there's a B four to M one, R two to M one, and R one to M one. All those three zones are going to one contiguous M one zone, and that's the ultimate zone, as you can see up top.
Which is letter A, right, here on?
Correct.
Correct. I do have a question for you on that. What's the buffer between the M one and the, and the R one A?
It was two hundred, over two hundred, bro?
Yeah. I think, if the engineer wants to come up, he can answer that question for you. There is a significant amount of wetland area. Okay. That they were suggesting that they were going to use as their buffer. I don't know if, Mr. Puig, if you want to expand on that just a little bit?
Yes, sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Ben Puig with Farias Development Limited. So it is kind of crazy, we have a lot of things going on here, but what we're trying to do, what the ultimate intent is, is these zone changes are due to a realignment of Fasken Boulevard that we are proposing from Mines Road to I thirty-five. So what that, what that means is, is in our old master plan, it was further to the north, so now we're trying to keep all of the land north of Fasken Boulevard in this, in our revised master plan that we'll be submitting in the future to M one. So the buffer between Fasken and the residential land, you'll have, we will do it to where, similarly to the way how we developed Fasken Boulevard on the west side of Mines Road, we'll have landscape easements in addition to the right-of-way that we propose, and in addition to that, there will also be drainage easements, and the front of our M, the front facing Fasken Boulevard is proposed to be parking lots and not necessarily truck cords or anything of that nature.
What is the distance of the buffer that you're going to have between the residential zone and the M one zone?
Well, right now, the, the marking line is the center of Fasken Boulevard is the separation between R one A and M one. So we will have a hundred-foot right-of-way, and then we'll have a fifteen-foot landscape easement, and then a single-family lot. So if you count, so a hundred, so that's a hundred and fifteen from the back of a residential lot to the other side of the right-of-way, plus whatever drainage easements we may need to act as a further, as a, as a further buffer.
Do you see any problems between tractor trailers that have refrigerated units on that M one section, creating a noise situation for your residential section?
Well, as I, what we're going to try to do is, the only thing that you'll see fronting Fasken Boulevard will be the front entrance of these warehouses, and the truck, the truck cords would be on the backside. So that, if you count that distance, now you're three or four hundred feet away.
And plus, you've got the buildings that will also act as a buffer and a noise stop.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your answer. Does anybody else in the commission have any questions for Mr. Puig?
I'm, I don't have a question, but I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. We're, we're going to give zone changes in different areas that we do not have in front of us how the traffic is going to move. Even though it's a zone change, we have to be aware that we have some areas in the city that have been connected close to M ones and B fours, and now they have been encapsulated without being able to move freely, without being exposed to the high traffic of the, of the commercial areas. Now, that being said, if I would even, I would even be there to, to table this item until we know how they're going to be moving the traffic there.
Well, I think we need to look at two things, first of all, this is a zoning matter only. The rest of it is really a platting issue. At that point in time, is when we need to address those issues. We can grant the zone changes, and then they have to come back, obviously, it's a platting issue, then they have to explain to the commission how they're planning to do their movements, you know, in, out, or whatever.
Yes, sir.
But at this point, it's just strictly a zoning matter, and that's it.
And, and I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, it was only a comment, but again, I feel that, that we don't have anything substantial to, to, to prove that we're granting the zone change. Once we grant the zone change and we got the residential R one there, then if they provide us even the, the easement, the a hundred-foot easement is not, is not big enough, when you're at least a hundred and fifty.
So, just to clarify, this, it's already zoned M one. And a lot of, and it's, and it already zoned R one, so what we're doing is, we're just putting a cleaner demarcation line of Fasken Boulevard as, as, as the M one section. When this property was, when it was involuntarily annexed back in the day, the whole entire property was M one. So we have reduced the amount of M one on this site significantly, and we think the best demarcation line that we have is, is drainage easements that we have on the east and west, and on the south being Fasken Boulevard.
Okay. Thank you. That was only my. Anybody else have any questions for the engineer?
No.
Thank you very much.
I move to.
Just a minute, just a second. Danny McGee, would you go ahead, I know you can just speak on the side.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commission members. Just wanted to bring some history on this. This area, many, many years ago, early two thousands, there was a TIA done for it, and things have obviously changed, and traffic has grown tremendously. So that's something that I know Tex would want to look at, it's their vote on two or three sides of this, and the city necessarily also wants to look at it. I think it's one of those cart before the horse kind of things, is if you're going to zone something that, that intention is to bring certain amount of traffic, I'd like to see that master plan, if it's the same one from years and years ago. We have a lot of problem with mixing of residential, well, not residential, but private cars with trucks, I don't know if that's happening in these. So you can go with the zoning, but if we have to come back and change it because the uses just don't mix, et cetera, same roads, even though the separation might be there for noise, but what about the use of the vehicles and stuff? So I'm not for or against this, I just wanted to bring those to the plate.
Point. Thank you for your point. All right.
Yes, sir, and on that matter, we, we are in the process of, of a TIA, and we are in conversations with Text dot on Fasken Boulevard, and then again, once, once everything is further refined, we'll come back to the city of Laredo to ensure that we're in compliance with local ordinance and, and all policies.
All right, thank you. Mr. Dovalina? Still. You had a motion? Motion to approve. You had a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, sir, Commissioner Narvais? All those, I'm sorry? I'm sorry. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries, thank you. The next item is amending the zoning ordinance to the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately forty-one point five acres. These are located south of Loop Twenty from B four, R two, R one to M one.
The applicant, Farias Development LTD owner, Barton Benson Jones, PLCC representatives, approximately eight point two five acres, situated in Portion Twenty-one, Abstract Forty-nine, L García Track Five, located east of FM fourteen seventy-two, south of Loop Twenty. Seeking B four, highway business district, commercial, forty-five letters were sent, zero, four, zero against. This one's a little closer to Mines Road, same area. Aerial view. Street view from FM fourteen seventy-two looking northeast-ish, just north of Rato Viojo Road. If you can see on the bottom left corner, that small section is B four, above and below it, B four as well. Sorry. And this is the ultimate zoning that they're seeking. And this is how it places with the other changes. Staff supports the application for the following reasons: Proposed zoning B four, highway runs along Mines Road fourteen, FM fourteen seventy-two, and will serve the surrounding areas with the commercial options in the area that is currently vacant. I can't see the screen. Motion to recommend or deny?
All right, thank you for your presentation. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Ben Puig with Fasken Oil and Ranch, and I'm here to speak in favor of the item, and I'm also here to speak in favor of items D, E, F, and G, which complete the entire project.
The whole, no. I do need to go then, because it's a public hearing, there have been notice individually, I need to go through them individually. Thank you for your comment. Yes, sir.
Buck Benson here, Mr. Chairman, I'm also speaking in favor of the same items, Mr. Puig.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against, against the zone change? But none heard? What are the wishes of the commission?
Just a quick copy, comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's the same comment that I made, made on the, on the previous item, and I want it on record.
Okay. All right.
Just a quick question, have we received any letters back, either in opposition or in support of this?
We have none. I checked it right before the meeting, there's still none. Last one was zone case forty-four.
We have a motion for approval, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries. The next item, amending the zoning ordinance to the city of Laredo. The next item, amending the zoning ordinance in the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately eight point two five acres, located east of FM fourteen, uh, seventy-two and south of Loop twenty from R two to B four?
That was the same?
Yes.
We're on C now.
We're on D. C.
C.
C? We just did the one to M one. This is, uh, the next one would be eighty-three point six one acres.
Forty-nine C.
Okay, eighty, oh, so it's letter E then?
Yes.
Seven E, and the application is forty-nine C.
Okay, uh, so it's eighty-three point, all right, all right, my mistake then. This is a public hearing, then, uh, rezoning approximately eighty-three point sixty-one acres, uh, this is located east of FM fourteen seventy-two and south of Loop twenty from R two to B three, and then M one to R one A, all right? Same presentation, right?
Correct, I was gonna show you the map of the boundary.
Okay.
So here, I utilized the entire parcel of where the zone changes were coming into play, so that way we made sure to capture as many, uh, surrounding neighbors that were, would keep, could be notified, instead of using every individual one where it would just be self-serving.
Makes, it makes sense, makes sense, okay. All right, so this is a public hearing, uh, and I already know that there's, uh, two speakers that already have asked, uh, that they're in favor of it. Does anybody else wish to speak in favor or against, in favor or against? All right, we've done heard, what are the wishes of the commission?
Uh, just same comment, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and support staff recommendation for a zone change.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A second, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, amending the zoning ordinance in the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately ninety-one point three four acres, is located east of FM fourteen seventy-two and south of Loop twenty from R one and M one to A G.
Zone change request is to go to A G, proposed use, open space or green space, forty-five letters sent out, none received, for or against, in the areas just east of the entire track. Maybe this is a zone from R one A to A G, and then M one to A G, which is mostly that pond area and some of that land to the north. This is their ultimate zone they're seeking.
The ultimate zone is what?
G. Staff supports the application for the following, proposed zoning provides for open green space that abuts residential and industrial uses.
All right.
Motion to recommend, approval or denial?
All right, thank you, this is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor or against, in favor or against? Okay? Yes, sir? Is this a tax issue or what? Ask the question, I'll see.
Mr. Chairman, Buck Benson, it's not a, a tax issue, we're just rezoning it, it'll be a future open space, so we're just rezoning it to, to be consistent with that.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and support staff recommendation.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. The next item is amending the zoning ordinance in the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately twenty-seven point nine seven acres. Um, this is located east of FM fourteen seventy-two and south of Loop twenty from M one to R two. It'll be your same presentation, pretty much just, uh, why don't you just outline right there the zoning parcel that is gonna be, uh, be zoned multifamily?
On the top right, that outline is red.
Which is E for us on the, on the previous map, yeah, there you go. I think you pretty much given us some good presentations, the same one over and over, this is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor or against, in favor or against? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next item is amending the zoning ordinance in the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately seventeen point seven two acres. Uh, this is, uh, originally described as special warranty D from T D B Holiday L C C to T D B Land Holding LTD, being at a, uh, twelve point two acres out of C A R M Properties LTD, at sixty-one point eight seven acres tract, and eight point fifty-two acres out of C A M R A Properties LTD, a two hundred and fifteen point seven zero six three acre tract of land, and four point four nine acres out of forty-five point nine nine acre tract, land owned by C L Commercial Investments LTD, located southwest of Saint David Lane and west of Moses Loop, from R one A to R one M H and to R one B. Yes, sir?
So I won't repeat the property description, just you stated there, the zone change request is R one B, single fa, single-family high-density, proposed use residential, letters sent out fifteen, zero four and zero against. The south of Laredo and aerial view, this is aerial view with the imagery, south of the ninth grade campus, LBJ.
Yeah.
Aerial view with the two hundred foot buffer, street view at the cul-de-sac, current cul-de-sac, Den, this is a zoning overview, current zoning, R one M H and R one A, future land use, neighborhood mixed use, and a high-density residential. Staff supports the proposed changes, R one B district is in conformance with the comprehensive plans designation of this area as neighborhood mixed use, proposed zone is incompatible with the residential uses in the area. In the planning and zoning meeting of August sixth, twenty twenty, item five B, the developer showed the master plan of Celito Lindo with one of the phases as unit twenty-five, being this same area as the one proposed in this zone change. Motion to recommend or deny?
All right, this is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ricardo Villarreal with Top Site Civil Group, um, here to speak in favor, and if you have any questions, here to answer.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Villarreal?
How are you gonna access the property, is, is this being proposed in, in the plat or what?
It, it'll be proposed in the plat, part of the Saint David Loop, if I may go back to the map, um, the, uh, this part of Saint David Loop, the northern part, has already been constructed in phase twenty-two, Celito Lindo Carm, phase twenty-two. Um, the southern part of Saint David is the responsibility now of the west side, which would be this property in question.
Yeah. My understanding is also a major arterial south of this property, is that correct?
Um, south of this property is a different owner, but yes, uh, as per the spacing of the thoroughfare plan, there's a plan.
Would you be able to access it, uh, from this development?
From this development, no.
No.
Once, uh, Saint David needs to be, uh, expanded, uh, can't remember the exact distance south of where it ends, off of this, uh, owner's south boundary line?
Okay.
But it, yes, it'll eventually tie into a major.
Because of the circulation of the whole area, I know, years ago, we looked at the circulation of this area, and it was very tight.
And there is an east-west road?
Yeah.
Also tying in?
Yeah.
That'll eventually tie into, uh, uh, the other, the other roads that are going north and south.
Okay, thank you.
Another, another, uh, another thing to look at is the R one M H, they're getting out of the R one M H and going to an R one B zone, which is, has come up in, in several council meetings about what they wanna do with R one M H, so this kind of answers the question for them.
What do you mean?
In other words, this is zoned R one M H, and they're changing it to R one B.
They're, they're splitting the, the development, yeah.
Now, what can you build on an R one B?
A, yeah.
A home, a smaller home.
Smaller home?
Yeah.
Square footage?
Three thousand square foot lot. It's what? It's a three thousand square foot lot.
So, so you're going to, uh, zero lot lines and, and those types of things, and the ordinance is such that they can?
No, 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 three thou, you're talking about the three thousand square foot lot? No, no, you can do the same five-foot setbacks on the, on the normal construction.
So what's the difference between that and the R one A?
The, the gap of, of square footage that you can do for a home. Now, the minimum on R one B is three thousand, however, market has, um, the trend has been going about four thousand square foot lots, but with a four thousand, you can't do an R one A, I mean, you can't do the four thousand square foot lots in an R one A.
Right.
So we have to go to the next one down, which is R one B, and I know it's misleading that, hey, it's a three thousand square foot home, but we're not gonna meet that target, it's gonna be, uh, a bigger lot.
Bigger lot, okay.
So what type of homes get built on the R one B?
Um.
Twelve hundred square?
Twelve hundred square feet? Depending on if they, well, now with the new, um, ordinance change on the back setbacks to being six feet, they can expand a little bit greater than the twelve hundred that you usually see, and also depending if they go to a second floor.
Yeah, you pick up fourteen feet down the lot because of the six-foot setback, and that's significant, that's another room.
One of, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
One of the, I need to make a comment, Rick. One of the biggest problems that we have, it's, uh, on this top subdivision that are already encapsulated by, by, uh, R one Bs, is the amount of parking that is being allocated for those small lots. I strongly believe that, uh, we need to, to look at this R one B, only, Rick, and, uh, we need to combine it in a way, Mr. Chairman, that, uh, it could be R one, R one A, and R one B, being?
Yeah.
That they're so small that you can't even park two cars in the front without, uh, exposing sections of the car to the, uh, to the, uh, to the neighbor's property, and, uh, and even though we know that land is quite expensive and materials are getting more expensive, I still think, uh, that we need to prepare to combine the different, uh, zoning, because R one B, we're gonna go ahead and get a bunch of people, a bunch of houses there, and then we have problem with the exits and the traffic, uh, I'm sure Mr. McGee might, uh, have a comment for that.
Just a, just a one note, uh, the, the zone requires three parking spaces per, per home, as per, per the ordinance, so, per lot, so that's there.
Off-street, off-street.
Off-street parking.
Yeah.
It does require off-street parking, three. Yes, it does.
It does allow for off-street.
The issue with that is, the issue with that is really important.
It does allow anything.
And the reason I made, the reason I'm, I'm sorry, the reason I made the comment, Mr. Chairman, is because I wanna see what, uh, Rick is gonna bring, and I wanna make sure that when we approve that subdivision, that we're gonna have people living there with dignity, without any problem with the neighbors.
I think he said he was looking at four thousand square foot lots, but the only way he could do that is with the, the, the minimum is three thousand, so he had to upsize that. The R one A is forty-five hundred, so he's in between, but I think the comment that you're making is one that I think we all need to look at, uh, where maybe we combine R one B and R one A with a certain percentage of each within a new development, and, and already, this is something you all need to kinda like work on, and staff, uh, his comment is well-taken, and because a thirty-foot front is, you know, when you combine thirty-foot fronts with a little bit of a mixture of a little bit bigger frontage, it just makes for a better situation in terms of density factors for everybody, uh, and everybody concerned.
I believe the minimum width on an R one B is thirty-five.
Thirty-five, I thought it was thirty.
No, thirty-five with, uh, depth of, the minimum depth is about an eighty-seven foot depth, here we're gonna go longer than eighty-seven, but the target market right now is right under two hundred thousand dollars a home, and obviously because of pricing in the, in the market, you know, you kinda, you know, the R one A doesn't allow that.
So does this create an affordable housing subdivision?
Yes, uh, as with conversations based on knowing with the client, but with the actual home builders in town, it allows them to purchase this house and provide a good home at that, at that market value that they're trying to target.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just another observation, I think maybe it's important also to consider in the future, um, uh, requiring some traffic studies when subdivisions are gonna increase the density that much. I think it's also important to make sure that our streets are able to provide for the real capacity that we're proposing.
Sure.
I know that other municipalities do that, and I think, like, it would be like a good move on our end to, just to make sure that, that the roads are able to, uh, provide for them.
To handle capacity.
Yeah.
Good point, good point, all right. Any other questions for, uh, Mr. Villarreal? Thank you, Mr. Villarreal. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against, against the zone change? Against, all right, what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve the item.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against?
I'm opposing it.
We have one against?
On the record.
Okay, one against. All right, motion carries. Next item is amending the zoning ordinance in the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately twenty-five point two one acres, um, and this is located south of Saint Luke Boulevard and west of Cuatro Vientos Road from R one A to R one B.
Proposed use is residential, letters sent out were five, same applicant, T D B Land Holdings LTD, and the representative's top-site engineering. This is a regional view, aerial view, just southeast of both schools. This is aerial view with the two hundred foot buffer, street view at the end of the school, at the end of Saint Luke by the school. Zoning overview, R one A surrounded by, uh, B one, future land use, and staff supports the application for the following reasons, proposed R one B district is in conformance with the comprehensive plans designation of this area as neighborhood mixed use, proposed zoning is compatible with residential uses in the area. In the planning and zoning meetings of August sixth, twenty twenty, item five B, the developer showed the master plan of Celito Lindo with one of the phases as unit twenty-five being in the same area. Motion to recommend approval or denial?
All right, this is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ricardo Villarreal, Top Site Civil Group, um, here to speak in favor and on behalf of the client, and as well as you have any questions, here to answer.
All right, thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change, against? Okay, what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve the item.
Second, a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye. I'm opposing, uh, Mr. Chairman.
And I was just about to say, those are against, so we have one against, motion carries. The next item is amending the zoning ordinance in the city of Laredo by rezoning all block five seventy-five, Western Division, located at twenty-seven, twenty, San Bernardo, from B three to B one to B four.
The applicant is Antonio G. Gonzalez, the owner, property description, location, as mentioned, five seventy-five, Western Division, twenty-seven, twenty, San Bernardo, also known as Evelyn Motor Inn, zone change of B four, highway commercial, proposed use is a bus terminal, letters sent out forty-three, zero four, zero against.
Four.
It's a regional view, aerial view, the two hundred foot buffer, street view capturing the entrance from San Bernardo, facing south. This is a little bit more of a aerial view, just zoomed out a little bit so you can get The zoning overview, so on the west side is B one, and the side closest to San Bernardo is B three. Future land use is neighborhood mixed use. Staff does not support the application for the following reasons, land development code, uh, twenty-four point sixty-three permitted uses, permits bus charter services in zones B four, highway commercial district, but the traffic in the nearby street, Jefferson and San Bernardo will be heavily impacted without some provisions to lessen the traffic issues that will arise. Parking spaces for customers must comply with the land development code, parking formula, one parking spot for each two hundred square foot businesses of commercial floor area, as, as example in the site plan. C, land development code twenty-four seventy-eight point three, parking formula, page V twelve, site plan is needed to complete analysis. Exits and interests of the buses or vans must be defined in the site plan to prevent any accident of the congested intersection on San, uh, Jefferson and San Bernardo. Motion to recommend approval or denial?
All right, this is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change, in favor of the zone change?
Good evening, gentlemen, and it's Villarreal, my name for the record is Graciela Gonzalez, my husband Tony, and we are for the change. Good evening, gentlemen, and it's Villarreal. My name for the record is Graciela Gonzalez, my husband Tony, and we are for the change.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the owner?
No? Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
You're gonna build according to the, uh, the documents, you're gonna build that terminal?
No, we're not. We're selling the, the property.
You're selling the property?
Yes, sir.
And, and somebody's gonna build the terminal?
Right.
Mr. Vasquez, he's right here. He can come to me.
They're here?
Yes.
Yeah, they're here.
The reason that I ask is that once we allow a zone change, see, if they decide not to buy the property from you, then the zone change will remain, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And we end up probably, probably with a, with a block, a B four, that will be exposing all the community around to bars, maquinitas, et cetera, even though I'm not against any of those businesses. I am concerned that, uh, that that might happen because what we will approve of this. Um, I'll go ahead and, uh, and bring it over after you close the, uh, the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Go ahead.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have questions for staff. The CUP wasn't an option, or was it?
It was an option.
Yes, if you could see the recommendation that we put in there, they're asking for a zone change, but we did put a comment in there that if, that if you consider that, that that's something that we would consider also. And that help, obviously helps with, you know, setting conditions to make it a little bit nicer for the surrounding, surrounding areas.
Residential.
That's correct.
But that would have to be, uh, the owner or the new owner to come in for the CUP.
So we can do it here.
And it could, it's transferable to the new owner?
You can transfer the CUP to the new owner?
They can apply for it.
Huh?
Yes, they can apply for it.
They can apply and it transfers. We, uh, we can approve it and, uh, and he can transfer it. They can transfer it because I know that was a big discussion we had a few months ago. And then we got that resolved where it is a transferable, yeah, situation where, you know, it makes it a lot easier for anybody selling property to be able to transfer it to, to the new owner. We got that resolved where it can be done pretty easily.
It will also have a restaurant and a gift shop, which will, you know, bring employment to the community. And it's, it's gonna be a state-of-the-art bus, uh, terminal.
So I guess I have a question for them.
Yes.
So, um, if, based on the, on the readings here, staff not report, is not supporting the stat, the, the zone change, however, they are recommending a CUP. Would that's something that you'd be, um, agreeable to if we denied the zone change but did make a recommendation for a conditional use permit for the bus terminal? Would, would that be, would that be something you?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
So what staff's recommending is a conditional use permit, so for you all to operate currently as a B three, but with a conditional use permit to be able to operate the bus terminal?
Oh.
Is that something that you all would be in agreement?
Yes.
Possibly?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Uh, anybody who wishes to speak for or against the zone change? For or against?
Good evening. Uh, Marty Do, I represent, uh, Tornado Bus Company and El Expreso Bus Company, and it's our two companies that have an interest in, uh, this property. And so we've been in Laredo for a lot of years, and so if anyone of, uh, any one of the members have a question, maybe I can answer that by chance.
We'll actually.
Conditional use.
Well, the, the issue is there, the staff does not support the zone change to B four, but they are willing to say, we'll give you a conditional use permit specifically for your use of bus terminal.
I, I think, you know, I think that would work in, in our particular case. We cannot, there's a lot more due diligence that we have to go forward with. And the, the first thing on, uh, on our radar screen with any new terminal is the zoning. And, and would that allow us to spend the money that we need to spend to do the further due diligence? So, uh, that, uh,
Given the condition.
With, with conditional approval.
Additional use permit specifically for a bus terminal would allow you to do a bus terminal.
Right.
The zoning would remain a B three with a conditional use permit overlay specifically only for a bus terminal. If the use would ever change from a bus terminal in the future to something else, then it would revert back to a B three zone.
Understand.
Okay, just to make it clear.
If I can make a comment, Mr. Chairman, real quick. After you built the terminal, you can come to us again and, uh, and, and we can, we can change to a B four, Mr. Chairman. Because we know that, uh, there's a terminal over there. I mean, we, we can't, we don't have to worry about any bars or, or other, I, other businesses that might affect the community. Just a comment.
Okay, I'll take it. All right.
I have another, another comment. I think, yes, so, uh, staff was also, the, the other concern for staff was not just the, the conditional use, but also like the traffic impact.
Well, that's a good question that you're gonna propose. How many buses on a terminal do you normally get to go in and out on a daily basis?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn to Mr. Vasquez.
Okay.
Let, let him answer.
That was a true answer.
Right, right.
Buenas tardes a todos, Mr. Chairman. Pleasure saludarles en esta tarde tan bonita. Aproximadamente será un por medio de quince autobuses por día.
Por día?
Yendo de sur a norte o de norte a sur, posiblemente más dependiendo el negocio. Ahorita gracias a Dios está funcionando muy bien. Tomando todas las medidas precautorias por la CDC. Yo siento que va a haber un incremento bastante grande. Por esa razón queremos invertir en este, en esta propiedad para hacer una terminal en forma debidamente para darle un mejor servicio a nuestros clientes. A favor de este proyecto.
Y, los buses entran, si son quince, en veinticuatro horas, ¿verdad?
Así es.
O probablemente es uno cada dos horas, algo así?
Puede ser tres o cuatro a la vez. Eh, cada dos horas, dependiendo los horarios. Pero sí, este es el transcurso de las veinticuatro horas, entre quince y veinte autobuses.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's very near the I thirty-five.
Okay. That's, that's, okay. Yes, sir, Mr. McGee. Gracias.
Good evening, Danny McGee, Director. I am not for or against this by any chance? I mean, I know the property's been, uh, uh, without any kind of tents for many, many years, so I don't want to give away of that, of course. But I just wanted to make the commission aware that there are single-family homes, there are several sides there. And, uh, if you go with commission use permit, we need, I would urge that we go with, with something that prohibits parking of the buses back there, light pollution, that those things are looked at, so that, that the, the neighbors, we, we get a lot of complaints across the city from single-family homes that are fronting or in the back of businesses, whether they're trucking or stores. That's one of the biggest complaints we get in the, in the traffic department, so it's one.
No, that's a good point, well taken, but I believe that, uh, under condition use permit, it would require fencing, uh, all, uh, all around, the privacy fence, all around that property, other than the entrances and it. That, that would be one of your conditions, I'm assuming.
Puedo hacer un comentario más sobre lo que mencioné. Afortunadamente, el equipo que traemos, este, en la flota del Tornado Expreso, ese equipo moderno, el modelo, el más, el bus más viejo que traemos es dos mil diecisiete. Ahorita acabamos de comprar diez autobuses más dos mil, modelos dos mil veintidós, que cumplen con todas las regulaciones, normas del Departamento de Transporte, E D A, E P A. Y todos los movimientos que se harán, se harán dentro de la propiedad, no afuera de la calle.
Okay, gracias.
And, and that, Mr. Chairman, it's something that it's appropriate for the community, that, that station is gonna re, revitalize the, uh, the area. So I'm, I'm ready to make a move when you close the public hearing.
All right, anybody else who wishes to speak for or against the zone change? For or against the zone change? All right, none heard? All right.
I'd like to make a, a motion to, uh, to deny the B four, but approve the, uh, the condition use permit for that area.
Okay.
They have to apply.
The action is just to deny?
Yeah.
Then they'll come back and they'll reapply for a CUP, and at that time we'll talk to them. Well, I think we can, we can.
We can, we can do it right now.
Give you a CUP and say, take forward a CUP as a recommendation. I believe we can do that. Yes, sir. We can change it. We don't, we don't need to go through the application process again. The commission can say, you know, we're gonna go ahead and ask you to get a CUP.
I'm gonna amend, uh, to include that it can be transferred, Mr. Chairman.
The action is specific to the, to the B four. Yeah, but the, the zone, the zoning case is for a change that you're denying to a B four, but the commission could change that and say, we're recommending a, a CUP on this particular, uh, property.
We're following your recommendation.
That's, we're just, you know, it's, it's allowable, it is allowable. Then they'll come back and apply. They'll come back and. No, 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 no.
No, no, no.
We will do the action right now.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanna remind the commission that once a site plan is submitted, it has to be further reviewed just to make sure that the lot has a turning radius, the, the access to a property, the parking, and there's other things that need to be further reviewed.
That's true. The CUP still needs to come back with all the conditions.
I believe the notice has to be public, right? Has to be a public notice that the item came before us for a CUP.
We don't have the conditions.
For a CUP.
We don't have the conditions, you're right.
The item for a, for a, for a zone change.
We don't have the conditions. So, yeah, it would be a denial with recommendation for it to come back and see, a CUP. That would be a motion.
Application for a CUP.
And to be clear, the applicant can still appeal and go forward with their zone case to council.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and amend the, uh, the motion to deny the B four and, uh, and to, well, I wanna make sure that they come back and we approve it, uh, early. So I wanna add that, uh, they can come back for a, for a CUP and we will approve.
They'll have, they'll have the choice. They can reapply for a CUP, or they can go to council and fight the, the denial. Uh, but it's their choice. We'll give them the opportunity to decide what they wanna do.
Council will have our notes and our comments that we recommend.
Yeah, they'll have your recommendation.
CUP, that's correct.
I, I just wanna add one other thing. If, if the members know where our terminal is now, you know that that's a very small terminal. And so parking i- is always an issue, but we, we seem to be able to, to always are successful to park, not be able, to not park on the street. This property is over two acres, so it allows many, many things that we don't have right now.
Yeah.
I don't, I, I, I don't think parking will be an issue. I understand about getting in, getting out, those things. But I, one of the reasons why we looked at this property, because it does provide parking
Yeah.
to where we, to where we can avoid parking on the busy streets of the city, so, um.
Can I make a comment? So I, I believe we're, we're all in favor of the project. It's just technicalities that we're trying to, yeah, understand.
Okay, all right. Your motion.
That was a motion.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, uh, which is to do a.
Repeat the motion? Yes, the motion is to deny the B four and, uh, and to, 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 to recommend that, uh, the owner come back with a CUP application and we will approve it.
Yep.
That way, city council knows that we will approve it. And, uh, and the gentleman that are buying the property, he can rest assure that, uh, we're not gonna, we're not gonna hold you. We're gonna allow you to build the terminal.
Not supporting.
So that's, that's, yeah, the motion right there.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. That's fine.
You'll second the motion? Yeah, all right. So the motion is to, to deny the B four.
Yeah.
You all, you all understand the motion, right? To deny the B four and recommend the CUP? Okay?
Yes, sir. How long is this gonna take?
That's a good question.
Do, do you have that, uh?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
If you get together with, uh, with staff, we can probably see it Orlando for the next meeting. So it will only take about fifteen days.
By law, he's gonna have to take this recommendation to city council, okay? The recommendation that is gonna go forth, the recommend, uh, city council is that the B four be denied, but that a conditional use permit be, you know, is what, what ultimately they want.
Yeah.
But the process is you still have to go to city council. At city council, you can also say, you know what, we are in favor of the B four. We want you to give us a B four. The ultimate decision makers for the zone change is the city council. We can just recommend to the city council what to do.
Okay.
And the recommendation right now, in talking to, what the staff is recommending is a denial. So we're saying, okay, we're gonna support staff to deny the B four, but we're recommending that the conditional use permit come back to this commission for approval. The reason for that is because in the conditional use permit, there are, like it says, conditions. And the conditions will be outlined so that everybody understands. These are the conditions for a bus terminal to operate, and it'll have them all outlined.
Why, why were you asking, Mr. Gonzalez?
I wanted to ask how long is this gonna take?
For the process to turn it around?
What's in its council meeting?
That's what we're, we're looking at right now.
It's gonna go in two weeks to council?
No, sir. Um, it'll go on the second meeting of August.
So.
August sixteen.
Also, there will be.
August sixteen.
August sixteen.
So a month from now, thirty days.
Okay, so now from here, we go to city council?
Yes.
Thirty days from now. Now, if they approve the zone change, then, then that's it. But if they, they deny it and then you have to come back, it's another thirty days, but by the time we get it back to you.
What, what's the turnaround for withdrawal? Like, can they withdraw and then just restart the process on their own?
Can they?
That's, that's another option.
Can they withdraw their application?
They can withdraw right now and say, let me just do the CUP now. That way they can turn around.
I mean, they can do the CUP now and continue on with their B four.
So that.
They can do both.
Oh.
And, and so how long would it take to do the CUP from that point?
It'll, I mean, it'll, the next submittal date is, I don't know. Do you have the spreadsheet up?
Yeah.
Um, it'll be approximately about a month.
Thirty days.
Yeah. The twentieth is.
You have to apply tomorrow.
Okay.
Is tomorrow the submittal date?
No, the twentieth.
The twentieth?
Correct, that is.
Okay, so I, I, I take care of this. I mean, now do I have to come to you all, or I go to the zoning and planning again to ask for that application?
Yes, come back to our office.
Okay.
We'll get through.
Yeah, we'll explain, we'll explain everything.
But, but this meeting will go to the city council now, right?
Yes.
And they'll give the, the okay or the nay or?
On the zone change.
Right. On the B four. On the B four.
But still have to go to your people, say like tomorrow, go get that permit?
If you choose to, if you wanna pursue the CUP as well, yes.
Yeah.
You know, but you can.
That way you hedge both sides.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. In a second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those against? All right, motion carries. Next item is a review and consideration of the following master plan. The re, review of the revision to the Copper Creek subdivision master plan from tennis residential. The proposed, the purpose of this revision is to reconfigure phase five.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant is M R M D Development. The engineer of record is Top Site Civil Group, LLC, Ricardo Villarreal. Property description forty-three, approximately forty-three point thirty-seven acres, located east of Cuatro Vientos, Loop Twenty, and north of Worms Road. The zoning for this two-hundred-and-ninety-nine lot owns R one A, and the proposed use is residential. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed master plan. Comments from planning and traffic safety. Parks and leisure. And the proposed motion.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ricardo Villarreal, Top Site Civil Group. We do just wanna discuss a couple of the traffic comments. This way. Uh, the first one, I don't wanna beat a dead horse. I think we went through it the last meeting. Uh, if I need to go over it again for the members that weren't here, I'll go ahead and, uh, oblige that. But the block length, uh, not being more than three hundred feet, um, you know, so we, we consider it as a width, and I, I won't go, I won't divulge into, into that as much. Um, we do have another comment that, uh, the streets must tie in at a ninety degree for a hundred feet. Um, that's really the only street that's tying in other than a ninety. Um, it's on a phase that's already been approved. However, I did just wanna explain a little bit more on, um, fifty feet versus a hundred feet and give you the, the real example that we see out there. Now, I have conferred with my colleagues from other firms. Um, I can't take credit for some of these drawings, 'cause they, we kinda all got together and, 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 and came up with, uh, just what we wanna accomplish, so. When you, uh, tie in a road at a ninety degree, um, what you wanna do is you wanna accomplish that site distance. Uh, now, there isn't anything in the ordinance that requires you to be at a hundred feet to tie in at a ninety, at a hundred. So it's mainly to accomplish the best site distance that you can. Now, based off of a local and a local road, the maximum site distance you can get is two-hundred-and-twenty-two, based on the, the, the geometry of it. What we're proposing is tying in at, oh, let me show you the, this is what you get to see in the real world. Ninety degree, everything ties in, you know, a trap, one, one street traverses the other. Um, we are proposing on one of these streets is a fifty-foot where it, one car ties in at a ninety degree, and that's what you wanna accomplish, so that's, gives you the most site distance. Um, the reason we wanna lessen it from a hundred that the, that the traffic department's recommending to fifty is. is because you still get a good site distance on a road. So, in other words, if you're traveling on that road that's gonna connect to the, the other road and it's at a smaller, uh, it's at a smaller offset, you could still see the intersection. Now, when you tie in at a hundred, you back up the tangent at a hundred feet and you have to create a greater radius within that road that you're traveling. So, now that car has difficulty on that road that you're traveling as opposed to what we're trying to accomplish as a site distance at the intersection. So, now you have samples like this where you're traveling down a road and you can't see the intersection ahead of you because those intersections are tying in so far at a ninety, so far back. So, now, that's not to say that tying that at a hundred is bad. All it's saying is, based off of the use of the road, which are usually local to local roads, you usually can afford to tie in at fifty, you know, or, or, or within that car being exactly at a perpendicular angle once it gets to that stop sign. The hundred feet is more recommendation by ASHTO, which are state highways, when you have right of ways that are a lot wider. So, that way, you can bring everything back and your right of ways are wider. That way, you get a greater side distance. Um, kind of wanted to, I don't know if the traffic director wants to come up and kind of just elaborate, but that's just one thing that we wanted to scratch because then it kind of, it, it changes lot layouts, changes side distances. And so, those were the two comments, the three hundred foot and the tying in at, 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 at a hundred.
Okay. All right.
What, uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think, uh, uh, my comment, Rick, is that, uh, that that subdivision has enough, uh, uh, lots that going, uh, on the recommendation of traffic safety will not impact a lot. I still think, uh, that, I want to hear from Mr. From Mr. McGee and, and what he thinks about that.
While, while he comes on down, the purpose of this master plan revision is for the phase that you're gonna see in a bit. And the reason is because originally this master plan, which has already been approved, we were counting on the Webb County Drainage District to create a regional pond. It looks like that's a little bit fur- a lot further in the future than we would like. So, what we did is we created our own detention pond in phase five to account for this master plan. So, that's, that's, it's not a brand new master plan coming in. It's just, um, it's just, uh, that little small change. But these little items that were added, you know, can change, you know, uh, some of the other phases that were already approved.
Great, McGee, traffic is here. Uh, I guess is, is there a question I can specifically answer or would you just like my opinion on what was just...
Question is, uh, Mr. Villarreal explained why he would connect at fifty and not a hundred as the way you are.
Okay. Uh, there are several reasons. Uh, I really don't think that this is the venue to discuss those things. Those are engineering decisions and they're not subject to over, you know, return by a commission. I think Mr. Villarreal has chosen this venue to express those things. I think he's borderline ethics. Uh, he's, the ethics of the engineering code say he's not supposed to attack an engineer publicly. And I will take this meeting and, and submit those to the professional engineering board, have them decide if that's what he's doing. Nevertheless, as your traffic engineer, I have that latitude and that, that's why I was hired is to express my engineering opinion. We have many problems out there that, uh, the developers and consultants don't know that we have. And we felt that we've chosen the, the decision that lent itself to enforcement, to checking plans. We have one person that checks these plans and it's just a lot easier to check them. It's a lot easier to enforce them, the parking, that kind of thing. So...
So, would you be okay if those, uh, if those comments were removed?
Uh, well, no. Uh, Mr. Villarreal has visited my office many times. Why he's taken this opportunity to ignore the last two times he's been here, I don't know. My door is open to any consultant in town. They may not agree with me, but my door is open. Uh, the, I have allowed and create, uh, uh, given some latitude for, uh, master plans that go back many years that any, might make your changes, they would allow them to, uh, to lose lots like that. We haven't asked for it. So...
And actually, I'm not trying to, to put anybody in the spotlight, Mr. McGee. Actually, I just want to know if you're okay with the removal of the, of the, of the comment because that's what he's asking for.
No, sir. If we meet the comment, it's because we, we, we believe in the comment.
Think. That's what I wanted to hear.
Just a minute. The plat- the plat has previously been approved and the change that is occurring in the plat comes in only as the regional pond that is gonna be constructed. And was it approved previously without these comments? And are we interjecting the comments as an afterthought because we didn't do it before when the plat was originally approved? Is, is that what the case is?
That may be the case in some of these, is that nobody was really checking.
Is it in this case?
I don't know. I don't know if this was checked before. We get master plans and then the engineer will say, well, you approved my master plan, but we don't check site distance. We don't check these types of curvature. We expect the developer and the consultant to do their homework and not have us. They have this attitude where they say, well, you didn't catch it, so we're, we're approved. No, you have a PE license and you're supposed to stand by it. Whether I catch it or not, you're responsible for redesign. And so, if I catch it at the very last hour, you are still responsible for that. He mentioned that ASHTO does recommend a hundred feet. I'm not pulling out of thin air.
All right.
So, when was the plat approved originally?
The master plan.
The master plan. I think he read it. When was it first approved?
First approved, I think it goes back to...
I do, I do want to make a comment on that. Um, I think Mr. McGee's open door policy is, is fine. I'll visit with him anytime. We've discussed some of these things before. But when we see him again in the, in here, I have no choice but just to come in here and, and if it's on the, if it's on the comment, I have to address him on here. Um, now, they can be engineering or they cannot be engineering. A lot of these comments on master plans are engineering that you deal with, that you all have to make a decision on. My thing is just explaining our point of view, um, whether that gets voted on or not. That is basically on the commission's, uh, um, I guess, forum. Uh, but beyond that, any questions that I may answer, both here, out of here, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm also, I also have an open door.
What, what, uh, and I don't want to make this a, a long, uh, item. But, uh, if, if he feels that, uh, that, that, that comment should stay, either we have a choice to table it until you get together with him and then, uh, get things straightened and they come back to us, maybe we can approve it. See, I mean, that's as simple as that.
And, I mean, but the, the, it's the simple example right now that was given. Um, when you, when you ask the director, is he willing to take out the comment? And if it's a no, I have no choice but to discuss it here at, at the commission. Um, now, I don't know if there's any other, I, I discuss, I'll sit down with them anytime, but, you know, we see some of these comments consistently and, and we try to explain it. Either it's a misinterpretation on the ordinance or something. It's a difference of opinion. That's engineering. Difference of, you know, you, you can engineer so many things at different, a hundred different ways. We're just trying to get our way through, um, within the parameters of the ordinances and parameters that we're given.
Mr. Chairman. Let me, let me just ask him a real quick question. Rick, then the, the reconfiguration of this phase, is it the detention pond?
So, the master plan is a, um, updated master plan because phase five has been submitted. Um, and phase five was, there originally was lots in this area and we have changed it to a detention pond.
Detention pond.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the original, uh, approval was July of twenty twenty.
July twenty twenty. So, the only change we're looking at right now is instead of being additional residential lots on there, there is now gonna be...
Yes, this phase changed, uh, I guess for the detention pond, some roads, um, were adjusted and the detention pond was added.
Okay. So, that, let me ask one more question. The one, the comment of the site visibility of a hundred feet is applying to two streets, is that correct?
Just one.
One. Just one.
Just one. And it's one that came in on the last meeting that that comment wasn't there. So, phase four, phase four, yeah, phase four came in two weeks ago and that comment wasn't there. So, I, that's where, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to, it's, it's just, it's my job.
Okay.
Real quick.
Yes, sir.
If we approve, Mr. Chairman, not to make it too long, we approve the way the, uh, the comments are there and then he can get together with Mr. McGee and, uh, and get it, get it, uh, get it all set up during the, uh, during the construction or the approval. Uh, we can, we could be here all, all night and, uh, I asked Mr. McGee, would you be willing to remove it? He said, no. He's the director of traffic.
Right.
So, um...
Let me, let me, the, the street in question here, is that correct? The one right next to the detention pond?
I'm sorry?
Which is the one that...
The street that's in question.
The street that's in question is on completely the other side.
Okay, it's on the opposite side.
Yeah, that's the only one that I saw.
Okay.
When I went in there, that, that matched that, that, uh...
That criteria.
That criteria, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, anybody else have any questions?
No, I know, I know that, uh, the last meeting, we had the same discussion about the width of the streets and whether there were the length of the streets for three hundred feet and whether the width of the street was also gonna be required to be three hundred feet. And, and if we're gonna have this discussion at every meeting, you know, uh, we need to resolve the issue because otherwise it becomes a, uh, a thorn, a thorn in everybody's side and, and nobody gets to resolve what they want. And, and so, I think there needs to be some sort of, uh, meeting of the minds to make sure that, uh, there, there is some agreement as to how it's gonna be defined. You want to be defined the length of the street as being three hundred or the width of the street as being three hundred? And, and should you have both or, or should you have a different number?
I think, uh, we just need, it's an interpretation thing, I think, to be honest with you.
Mr. Commissioner.
Let me get Mr. McGee to come up and answer that question. Sir, the issue on the definitions of street length, two hundred, is it length or is it width or? I think that was an issue that came up at the last meeting.
Right. I, I do want to explain about that. That is the current ordinance that's written and it's our job to enforce those ordinances. I have a reviewer. She sees the ordinance, writes a comment down. I, with there any engineer in town has come to see me and says, can we do this? We have allowed less than three hundred almost on every development. Nobody is getting to three hundred feet. But the ordinance says it's three hundred feet. So, we write it down because that is the ordinance that we're enforcing. But when they come and see us, nobody is getting, so we allow that. But it allows me to enforce the side distance problem. I said, as long as you can show me you're gonna meet the side distance, it's fine. And that, that has been, so I'm very, very perplexed why Mr. Villarreal has picked this venue to bring up this point when he has been the recipient of that kind of treatment where he comes in and says it's less. But I guess he just doesn't like the comment and have to come see me about it. But I do want to see every single one of those because I just want to make, make sure we're meeting the side distance.
So, even though the ordinance reads a particular way, the ordinance allows it and it's within your purview to make the exception to the ordinance?
My interpretation of the ordinance...
And does it say in the ordinance that it allows you to make that decision?
Okay. My interpretation ordinance is there is to establish uniformity, driver expectancy, and establish side distance. If I can see as an engineer, I make that decision, that it's not gonna affect safety, then I feel it's in my purview to override that. Yes.
And it so states in the ordinance that it is within your...
No, if, if, if every ordinance had to be applied a hundred percent, you would not need a city engineer. You would not need a city traffic engineer because that's what we do is we interpret these and apply them. Uh, I think I mentioned one time, someone came to me because the ordinance says lights have to be three hundred feet. And they came, they came in with one at three hundred and seven. What would common sense tell you? Seven feet is not gonna matter and I made that decision. But if the ordinance says it's three hundred feet, I'm taking it the other way now. Instead of being less in the ordinance, it's more in the ordinance. I said, well, why? Why, why make someone redesign something for seven feet of light? So, that's where I use my engineering judgment. And like I said, I bump heads with many, many engineers, but I dare want to come and say that they have not been able to get their plat to...
So, what you believe is that the, as long as the changes are not substantive, that you're allowed to make those changes in your judgment?
Mr. Dominguez, uh, asked me if I would be willing to remove my comment. It's either I remove it or not. Of course, I'm gonna say, but if, if he says, will you be willing to reconsider it? Of course. But I need to see what that alternative is. I just can't say I'll remove it and not know what that's gonna be left. If we can come to some kind of agreement, some redesign, of course.
Yeah. The concern that I have is that, that it creates a little bit of uncertainty and I know that these items...
Recode, recode, we'll fix that.
Well, we're, we're not, we're not there yet, so we're...
In, in the recode, we've gone down to two hundred feet, I think.
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Yeah, we, we've had the recode meetings and then we'll be going to the development community pretty soon. But because of that, I have personally encouraged, et cetera, we go down to two hundred feet as long as we're meeting the side distance.
What's the length right now?
By ordinance.
No, but what is it right now on the, on the plat?
Well, I don't know.
Well, that's the angle.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about the, the angle of the street coming in, but Mr. DeWalina wanted to discuss the three hundred feet.
It's a hundred.
Angle is one thing. It's, that's one thing and then the three hundred feet is another. But I recognize that three hundred feet was the old days where it's a grid system. It establishes, everyone knew that there's a block three hundred feet apart, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and the side distance worked for the most part. And I recognize that. Like I said, there's been many, many times where I, I, I will accept a lot less than that.
Or we can remove the comment at three hundred feet.
So, we can remove the comment. If, if he comes to see me and we can work out something that shows that, of course.
Yes.
But if you're asking me, it's either one or the other, then I would say my comment stands as it is.
Yes, sir. But why delay it more?
I'm sorry?
Why delay it more?
Because I, I won't see, I won't see what he's gonna redesign to. I don't understand the reasoning.
I think the comment serves as an insurance that he'll meet with them and come to...
And we have the authority to remove the comment. I, I, I don't believe you have the authority to override my engineering decision. Maybe in ordinance, yes, but engineering decisions, no.
Yeah, but you have the authority to override ordinances, right? Because you just said that you approved, you approved, you approved.
Well, if we, if we want to go there, I, I do, I think...
Yeah, I think... I just don't understand why we have to keep delaying.
We've had enough discussion on this item. I think we've had enough discussion. Thank you very much, Mr. McGee. All right. We've had enough discussion. Now, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll be willing to meet, Mr. Commission.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be willing to meet with him. You know, so if we want to, I'll present the same, the same thing to him. I'll be willing to meet with him. You know, as, we can move forward with these comments. Um, it is on record.
Okay. So, you're willing to move forward with the comments and be willing to take care of it?
With the comments. I have my, I, I mean, I have my engineering backing. It's not, nothing I'm...
That's fine. Then let me...
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, what, uh, staff recommendations.
So, just gonna call. All right. We have a second. Second. All those in favor, signal high by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is, uh, review and revision of Pinnacle Industry Center Master Plan. The intended is light industrial. Purpose of the revision is to reconfigure unit six and ten through thirteen.
For the record, the applicant is FM fourteen seventy-two Investments Incorporated, Kirk Kraus, president. The engineer of record is Gilpin Engineering Company, approximately seven hundred and seventy-two acres located west of FM fourteen seventy-two and north of El Pico. The zoning for the sixty-six lot development is M one and the proposed use is light industrial. General location, oh, whoops. Here we go. General location, aerial view, street view, and the proposed master plan. Comments from planning and water utilities, traffic safety, and taxi public transportation, and the proposed motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think if you recall, this item was, uh, tabled because you had some questions for the engineer. Yes. All right.
And the person that had the questions is in here.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jet Gilpin for the record and I am the engineer of record on this project. This is Kirk Kraus. He's our managing partner for the subdivision.
You already introduced me. Thank you.
I thought you said... I apologize for not making it to the last meeting. I had a conflict and usually when we have staff recommendation, things go pretty smoothly, so... I'm here now to clear up some of the questions. I, I reviewed the, the video, some of the comments that were made and, uh, did a little preparation to speak to some of those issues. So, if you want to follow up on those questions, I'm...
Go ahead.
Ready. Uh, what I'd like to start with is I'd like to show you the master plan that was approved. And, uh, well, before I even show you that, let me tell you, when we went to buy this property, one of the things we had to do was see what we could do with... And, well, before I even show you that, let me tell you, when we went to buy this property, one of the things we had to do was see what we could do with it. It was, it was a big purchase. So we had a long feasibility period and we worked on the master plan so that we could see what we could possibly do before we closed on the property. That's one of the biggest aspects of a lot of these documents is that they give us some guidance that we know we can work towards. And there's a lot of money being spent. We spent during the feasibility period, we probably spent three quarters of a million dollars looking at the property because it was such a big purchase. And one of the things we did there was we advanced the master plan. We already had a property next door and we added this ranch to the property. We came in with that master plan and we got it approved in, uh, let me see which date here it is. We got it approved in, uh, is it showing? Yeah. If I have it the right way.
Yep.
So for scale, I don't know if you can see it, but the staff can, can confirm that the layout that we got approved here has never changed. So the connectivity, there was a lot of discussion in that last meeting about the connectivity. We have four connection points to existing roadways, three that are proposed, four, some are existing and some are still proposed. But it's all property that we own that can connect to public roadways. I, I, I'm not aware of any subdivisions of this type in Laredo that have that many except for Tech House Industrial Park between 35 and Mines Road. Because they just go straight across, so they have a lot of connectivity. But there are a lot of them that were cited in the previous meeting that said, you know, one, one, one. That happens sometimes, but that's not the case here. This is the most that I've ever seen anyone start with. Uh, at the back of the subdivision, we have two more for a future roadway. So we have a lot of connectivity. But moreover, my point in showing you this exhibit that's back from 19 is this is what we use to decide how to deal with the city moving forward. So it got approved. And then it has a note on it that may be too small for you to see, but it says, note number three here, it says, unit sizes and number of lots shown may vary. So what it's doing is it's building into the idea that there's some flexibility that wouldn't really concern the city. What, what we really are required to get approved by the city in these master plans is alignments and connections. So like, for example, we have the water lines in there too and the sewer lines, but we don't count the manholes, we don't count the fire hydrants, we don't count the valves. Because at this level of planning, that's not an issue. They're just trying to see how are you going to tie into our system. Same thing with transportation. One of the biggest issues on transportation is we have to use a lot of judgment there to deal with people at Tech Dot. Like Dan used to be at Tech Dot. And there's a real strong tendency at Tech Dot to resist connectivity. Because people that are operating a certain roadway, they have a certain set of responsibilities and they view that connectivity as an interference to what they're trying to do, which is move traffic. So you have to really work your way through their processes to get the connectivity to be optimized for what we're trying to do. But also at the same time, not interfere with what, what their responsibilities are. So we did all that way back when. Uh, moving forward, we've, we've done a number of traffic impact analysis, but as these things change, the traffic impact analysis have to continue to occur. We do owe one to the city, but we don't believe that we owe one for the master plan. Because we're not changing the connectivity or any transportation issues with the master plan. What we owe one to the city for, and we had an agreement on this, Dan McGee and I did, that we wouldn't put another unit in front of you. Which we, we have a couple of units that are coming in. And the, the place that we present the traffic impact analysis for those is in the one-stop shop. So we're getting that ready. We'll have that traffic impact analysis ready in a couple of weeks. That's when we go to one-stop shop. And so we're looking to just stay on schedule. That's our request. I will show you the, the following master plan that was again approved by the city. And all we did here, this was in December of 20, no alignments, no connections, no utility lines changed. All we did was, we were changing a unit around, one of our previous plats. And we brought this in and said, you know, we're, we're changing the lot lines a little bit, but without affecting the roadways, the water lines and the sewer lines. So it again came before the city in December of last year. And then now the one we presented to you is about midpoint through this year. So we're pretty consistent about keeping up with these things and also keeping our traffic impact analysis rolling right along. So really what we'd like to do is, we don't ask for any exception on the traffic impact analysis moving forward. We just ask that we can move through this process right now and present the traffic impact analysis along with the units in one-stop shop. That's our request.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Gilpin?
So you don't have any issues with the comments that are here?
Well, I do with the comments at this meeting because they're different from the comments from last meeting, which I think is a bit peculiar because the item was just tabled. Last meeting, uh, we were, we were recommended approval subject to the comments, which is provide a traffic impact analysis, meaning we can move forward. And I think it might read slightly different this time and we might need to clarify that. So if that comment would say we don't move forward, then we would take an exception of that comment. But I, I think the intention is to just have the item reappear the same way it was at the last meeting and us provide you the answers to the questions you raised.
What is it changed?
You're okay with the.
What is the change?
Where is the change?
I, I think it was maybe the wording on.
Traffic impact analysis?
No, no, it was the statement.
Do you still recommend approval or maybe I misunderstood?
Yeah, it's, it's still approved, actually, the comments.
It's approval.
Yeah, scratch what he said.
I'm vote to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those against, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Next item. Consideration of the following preliminary plates and preliminary replats. Uh, item 9A is, is tabled. So can we have a motion to table?
Motion to table.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against, motion carries. Item 9B, preliminary consideration of the plot of Premier Industrial Park Phase One, intent is commercial.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is ABAP Mines 104 LLC. The engineer of record is Sherfy Engineering Company LLC. Approximately 104 acres located north of FM 1472 and southwest of FM 3338. The zoning for this 10 lot development is M1 and AG and the proposed use is commercial. General location. Aerial view. Street view. Proposed plat. The comments from planning. Water utilities. Traffic safety. Texas Department of Transportation. Utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the commission, Frank Estyle with Sherfy Engineering and we concur with staff comments.
All right, thank you. What are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the following comments.
And a motion, and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of replat of Lot 7, Block 7, Pueblo and Noble subdivision into Lot 7A, 7B and 7C of Block 7, Pueblo and Noble subdivision, intent is residential. Purpose of the replat is to subdivide one lot into three.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant is Ignacio Cerrada Lopez. The engineer of record is tech engineering and consultants. Approximately three lots, located north of State Highway 39 and east of Main Street over in Pueblo and Noble. This area is in the ETJ, therefore it is unzoned and the proposed use is residential. General location. Aerial view. The proposed plat. The comments from planning. Water utilities. Utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
All right. Can I ask a question?
Let's get the.
Do we have, sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Larry.
Do we have an agreement with the county where there is an interlocal agreement between the city and the county that allows the city to have these items come before it?
Uh, are, are you saying the interlocal agreement where one entity would take full control of the plating process in the ETJ?
Yes.
We do not have an agreement like that with what county now.
So under what auspices does this come to the planning and zoning condition?
In, in, in the, in the ETJ, we do have dual jurisdiction. It is my understanding, uh, based on the local government code, that border counties are exempted from entering into those interlocal agreements for who would govern the ETJ. The counties north of the, of the international border zone do enter into those agreements, but it's my understanding that the, the border counties do not. Because there are some areas where in the model rules, where the county, border counties are a little bit more stringent than the rest of the state.
I think it's in, uh, Texas Code 331.
I have an interlocal in the county, I work in a different way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, Rodolfo Torres from Tech Engineering, representing the owner, and we concur with the comments.
Thank you. What are the wishes of the commission? Any questions for the engineer?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those against, motion carries. Next item, preliminary consideration of the plat of Pinnacle Industrial Center FM 72 Unit 11, intent is light industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is FM 1472 Investments, Kirk Kraus, president. The engineer of record is Gilpin Engineering Company. Approximately 67.34 acres located south of FM 1472 and north of Vilacant Blue Road. The zoning for this nine lot development is M1 and the proposed use is light industrial. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. The comments from planning. Water utilities and traffic safety. Texas Department of Transportation. Utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Okay.
Again, Judd Gilpin, for the record, representing Pinnacle Development, or in this case FM 1472. I believe this is the one where the comment concerned me. Uh, I'll, I'll put that up here if it's not available with the staff putting it up. Or I'll read it. The comment is denying resubmit based on the following comments and it talks about the master plan, which was not the case before, correct?
Correct.
And so I can see the co, the comment was syncing up to where things might have been going, but when the items were tabled, uh, they were tabled because we needed to talk about the master plan. And this is where the master plan, the, the units normally, you can feed in, uh, transportation impact analysis with the units as we go through all the technical stuff. So if we get preliminary with you guys today, that doesn't guarantee us that we get to do the unit. It just guarantees us that from planning purposes, it looks right to you. But we, we, we still didn't have to go in to satisfy the five departments that have a, a letter involved, which is a one-stop shop. And we would put the traffic impact analysis in there in a couple of weeks. Our submittal date for that is, uh, I believe July 27th. And so if we can move forward here, we can, we can be turning stuff in, in the one-stop shop. That's my request.
Any questions?
More questions?
All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
I think we should move with it and, uh, and approve the, uh, the preliminary with the chairman and let, uh, the one-stop shop, uh, deal with the items he presented. So my motion would be to, uh, to go against staff recommendation and approve the preliminary.
Right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Motion carries. The next item is the preliminary consideration of the plat of Sapphire Industrial Park Phase Two, intent is light industrial.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe you skipped item 9E, which was the unit 12.
I'm sorry, 9?
Yeah.
9B?
Unit 12.
9B, which is Phase One?
9E?
Oh, E?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. The unit, the, it's the, the, the next.
That's wrong, sorry, that's right. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Pinnacle Industrial Center FM 1472, unit 12. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is FM 1472 Investments Incorporated, Kirk Kraus, president. Engineer of record, Gilpin Engineering Company, approximately 168 acres located south of FM 1472. The zoning for this 11 lot development is M1 and the proposed use is light industrial. General location. Aerial view. Proposed plat. Comments from planning and water utilities. Safety and Texas Department of Transportation. Utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Okay. Well, this is a very similar situation to your last one, so it's the same exact thing. So what are the wishes of the commission?
I, I'm glad that we'll have that matter cleared up and we'll, we'll be back before you guys, we're final, we'll have that matter cleared up.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, go against staff recommendation, approve the title. Second, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Ayes.
Those opposed? Okay. Daniela, you're opposed?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right, next item is, uh, item F, preliminary consideration of the plat of Sapphire Industrial Park Phase Two, intent is light industrial.
For the record, the applicant is Emerald River View Development Limited. The engineer of record is Portas Nance Engineering. Approximately 118 acres located south of FM 1472 and the zoning for this 16 lot development is M1. The proposed use is light industrial. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning and water utilities. Traffic safety, the utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Okay. Any questions for the engineer of record?
Mr. Chairman Wayne with Portas Engineering, I'll answer any questions.
Are you okay with the comments?
We, we're fine with comments.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. The next item is preliminary consideration of the plat of Sapphire Industrial Park. I'm sorry, no, I just did that. Uh, preliminary consideration of the plat of Hopper Creek subdivision Phase Five, the intent is residential.
For the record, the applicant is MRMD Development Company LLC. Engineer of record is Top Site Civil Group LLC, approximately 10, 85 acres located east of Cuatro Vientos Loop 20 and north of Worms Road. The zoning for this 59 lot development is R1A and the proposed use is residential. General location. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Water utilities and traffic safety. Parks and leisure. Utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ricardo Villarreal, Top Site Civil Group. We concur with the comments with the understanding that we'll meet on note number one, traffic, the traffic department.
Okay. So we have a motion.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
A second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. The item 10, if you want to make, if somebody would make a motion to take item 10, 11 and 12, these are all finals.
Make a motion to hear those three items altogether, 10, 11 and 12.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. I want to make a motion to approve items 10, 11 and 12.
Second.
12. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Thank you all very much.